Okay, here we go. Um, I have a little bit of technical difficulties in the beginning. Uh, Michael, good to see you. How's the studying coming along so far?
It's going well. Um, balancing my main thing is now balancing it with with work. Um, trying to squeeze in had a pretty hectic day today, to say the least. But but yeah, squeezing and studying this, these sessions has have helped a lot. Um, at first I tried to learn a lot of this prior to the course on my own. And I would say it's it's nearly impossible to do so. So the this course has clarified. Quite a bit.
Good. Yeah, it's it's hard doing on her, especially sometimes trying to read the read through the lines or between the lines. It's uh, yeah, it's tough. What uh, what type of industry do you work in? What type of engineer are you?
I'm in, I'm in the power industry, so I work for a power company here in South Florida.
Great. On the, when you say power on like the utility side?
Utility, yes. I was a, I was a utility designer. Um, for the first, I guess, two years of my career. Um, distribution systems mostly. And then now I'm transitioning into more of a management role, but. But yeah. Um. Um, distribution design, pretty much.
And uh, so you mentioned that, yeah, work's been kicking your butt lately, huh? Is your, is your boss a PE?
He's, he's not. My direct supervisor is not a PE, but on top of him, um. They're. Pe's. Yeah, I'm in the. Of of P's.
I was gonna say typically if if your boss is a P, a lot of times you let him know you're studying for the P exam will have way more sympathy with you and try to catch you some slack. Have you tried to talk about that at all with your with your direct supervisor?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, and and my company is very encouraging for pursuing the PE. And yeah, they they provide incentive incentives for courses and. And encourage us to to pursue it. I mean, it's it's good, not only for our own personal growth, but it could help. The company as well.
That's great. That's great. Glad to hear it. All right, I'll go ahead. I'm gonna share my screen and uh, we'll go ahead and get started. So um, we'll go for the next hour. Um, the way I like to work these is, you know, my goal is to always cover as much as possible. So the one hour goes pretty quick. That means you're completely in the driver's seat, you know. Anytime if you want to move on, if you want to move forward, you can tell me at any time. You're not gonna hurt my feelings. Uh, if you want to stay longer on a problem, ask any kind of follow up questions, of course, that's also encouraged. So. Uh, again, we'll try to cover as much as possible, but any anytime you want to move forward, speed up, slow down, anything like that, just let me know.
Okay.
Um, so we'll, we'll start with stability. You had asked specifically for clarification. On step seven, when the generator starts motoring, is that right?
Right.
So I included the steps before and after, just because that might help with this discussion. But yeah, what, what are your specific questions with the motoring region?
So. My, I, I kind of wanted to 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 know intuitively, um. When the the synchronous speed, so from six to seven in in the previous lecture. Um, it was stated that the synchronous speed from six to seven would would. Be increasing. Or.
Yep, that's right.
Yes, it would be increasing until load is shed, right? I I kind of wanted to to visualize. Why and how does the load get shed from the motor?
Sure. So um. Easiest way to think about stability when there's a fault. It kind of helps to think of, you know, first of all, synchronous generator. Right, you're on the utility side, so you probably have a little bit more exposure, even you know, working in distribution, but. You probably live a little bit more exposure when it comes to generators, working for utility compared to, I would say, like uh, MEP or building engineers. But the rotor spinning around inside the stator of a synchronous generator. You know, anywhere from eighteen hundred to thirty six hundred RPMs, depending on the number of poles in the machine. So that things whipping around, right? Lightning fast. And it builds up a lot of momentum. And builds up a lot of inertia. So a way to think about the changes in inertia as the rotor. Speeds up, tries to catch back up with the synchronous speed of the stator or slows back down. Uh, it helps to think of it as a spring, right? When we have a lot of inertia built up, it's like we're compressing a spring. And then when that inertia is let go, it's almost like that spring is. Being let go and it's allowed to spring back. So those are two, that's an analogy that just kind of helps. So before we talk about when the generator motors, let's just back up and talk about. Step number six here. So. This was the initial, the initial operating torque angle. Of the generator way before the fault, right? We're a couple of steps forward in this kind of diagram from class four rotating machines. But. At point five previously. So I actually, we'll we'll step it back, right? There was, it was operating at. At the initial torque angle, a fault occurs, right? It drops down to the output power equals zero. And then the fault persists. While the fault persists, there's no terminal voltage, there's no output power, there's, there's nothing. Opposing the generator, so it starts to speed up. During the fault before the fault is cleared. So when it speeds up. There's still zero output power. But the torque angle increases from whatever the initial operating angle was. All the way to, we're just gonna assume it's the critical clearing angle when that fault occur is uh, cleared and the breaker opens. Now, remember your, your torque angle. Think about your rotor, you think about your stator. The torque angle is how much the rotor either leads in front of the stator pulls by. Or how much it lags behind it by. So when there's no electrical load. During the fault. That rotor speeds up. The angle increases as it gets ahead of the stator poles. So that's what's happening when the angle increases from the initial angle to the critical clearing angle. All right, we assume. The fault is cleared right at delta CR. So now the fault is cleared. The generator is now back connected to the grid. Producing power. But now it's producing power that increase in the rotor angle. We've bumped from this point on the curve all the way up to this point on the curve. Which is a lot higher than the than the mechanical input power. So when that happens, as soon as the fault is cleared, we're bumped up on this point in the curve. The. The rotor. From the initial operating angle to the critical clearing angle. Over here, right on point, the initial point, we're operating at synchronous speed. Then during the fault, before the fault is cleared. The rotor speeds up. It goes faster than synchronous speed. There's no electrical load opposing the rotor. That's when we increase in torque angle from the initial angle up to the critical clearing angle. Boom, fault is cleared, we're back up on the curve, but we're way up here. When we're way up here, the rotor at this exact point is still faster than synchronous speed, right? Due to that initial speed up. But now the generator's coupled to the grid again. So now it has an electrical load. An electrical load on the generator, it it tries to oppose the rotor. It wants to slow the rotor down. It can't though, because we're feeding the rotor steam. And it ends up at this equilibrium point where the rotor moves at synchronous speed. When it's at steady state conditions, because it's following the stator field when the rotor is excited. So now we're back up on this curve, the fault's been cleared. But the rotor got ahead of the stator field in both speed and in terms of the torque angle. So now we've got a load applied to it. What's the load gonna want to do to the rotor now that the fault is cleared and we're right up at this point? It's gonna want to do what to the rotor?
Slow it down.
Yeah, it's gonna want to slow it down. So the rotor is operating faster than synchronous speed. The rotor starts to slow down. But. We're still faster than synchronous speed. So as the rotor slows down, look, we're gonna go. From this point on the curve, see if I can draw a nice arrow. We're gonna go up to point five. From here to here. The rotor speed. Is slowing down. And it's gonna stop at point five is exactly when the rotor. Equals synchronous speed. Right at this point, it's faster than synchronous speed. The rotor starts to slow down, but we're still moving further along that curve. Because it's still faster than synchronous speed up until point five, when it finally reaches synchronous speed. So now it stops at point five. We still have that electrical load applied to it. The rotor. Is way leading the stator poles. Now the rotor is at an angle of delta max. Again, we applied the load back to the generator because the fault was cleared. The load is gonna continue to want to do what to the generator? It's gonna continue to slow it down. Yeah. So again, we reached synchronous speed at point five. But the the rotor is still slowing down. In other words. We've got enough input power to the rotor, enough steam. To keep it operating at its initial point. We're way up here, right? It's producing more power than the amount of power we're giving it. So it's like that spring analogy, that spring was compressed during the fault when it jumped up from delta O. The initial to the critical clearing angle. Now that we're back on this curve, it's like all that momentum that was built up is let go. So it drifts up to point five. But now we're not feeding that generator enough steam to keep it here, right? We're not feeding it this much. Uh, steam. Here's the mechanical amount of power that we're feeding. It's all the way down here. So then it's gonna start to slow down, right? We don't have enough speed and steam to keep it operating at that fast of a level. So again, that the electrical grid, it's gonna continue to to slow it down. So now we're gonna go from five up to six. We're continuing to slow down in speed. So if at point five, the rotor had finally reached synchronous speed. And then from point five down to point six. What's the relationship of my speed right at point six? If it was at synchronous speed before and it's continuing to slow down?
Yeah, it's less.
Yeah.
The rotor speed is less than the synchronous speed.
Perfect. Yep. It's less than synchronous speed right at point six. It was continuing to slow down from this point to point five to point five down to point six. So at point six, that's where. Our mechanical input powers, that's how much steam is trying to spin that rotor. Now you would think that it would stop right here, but the only way it's gonna stop and settle back into. Its initial operating conditions where our mechanical power equals our electrical output power. And the torque angle equals the initial torque angle. The only time it's gonna be able to stop here. Is if it gets to point six and the rotor speed equals synchronous speed. So the rotor speed hasn't equaled synchronous speed and back when all the way was at point five, right? That was the last time it was equal to synchronous speed. So. If we hit point six and the rotor is now way slower than synchronous speed. It's gonna continue to do what? It's gonna continue to fall back. So here's where we get to that motoring condition. So we were at six, right? Now the the motor, we drift all the way down to point seven. Again, it really helps to think of look PM, that's our mechanical input power to the generator. At points, at point six, the rotor speed was less than synchronous speed. This curve represents how much power the generator is supplying. If we just pick on a point right here in between point six and point seven. Is my output power bigger, equal to, or smaller than the power we're feeding it?
From the graph, it shows that the output power is less.
Exactly. Picking on just this intermediate point right here on the curve, rotor speed is less than synchronous speed. We continue falling backward on the curve, but when we do that. Think of your, think of, think of this as like the load on the generator. That's the amount of power the generator is supplying. So now. We're giving it more power and steam, our mechanical input power is this value right here. We're giving it more power. Than the current load it's supplying. What do you think that's gonna do to the speed of the rotor? At point six, we were continuing to slow down in speed from point five. But once we start drifting down from point six. There's less output power. What what's, what's a bigger force? The less output power, the load, or the more steam we're giving it?
The more steam, it would speed it up, right?
Perfect. Yeah, we're giving it more mechanical power compared to the electrical load. So now the mechanical power is gonna overpower the electrical load. Now the mechanical power takes over as the driving force. Now it's gonna speed the rotor up. So from point six to point seven. The rotor speed. Starts to increase. At point six, we were way less than synchronous speed. So the rotor speed is speeding up. But we're still not at synchronous speed just yet. It's gonna take a while to get there. And right here at point seven is when the rotor speed finally equals synchronous speed. It was less than synchronous speed at point six. It's starting to speed up as we continue down on the curve since the input mechanical power. Uh, outpowers the electrical load, right? This value on the graph is is bigger than anywhere on this curve. So it's speeding up. Finally, at point seven. Rotor speed equals synchronous speed. Now, if you look at it again. What's bigger? My mechanical power up here? Or all the way down here, we're in the motoring region, so this is a negative value for for the output power. It's actually drawing power. But what's bigger? PM or a negative value for P?
Yeah.
PM. So what's gonna, what is PM gonna continue to do in terms of the rotor speed? It's gonna continue to do what?
Just speed it up.
Got it. It's gonna continue to speed it up. No different than after point six, PM is bigger than the output power. So it's increasing the speed of the rotor, increasing the speed of the rotor, increasing the speed of the rotor. We get to point seven, the rotor speed is finally equal to the synchronous speed. Which means it stops falling backwards on the curve, right? It has a temporary moment of rest. And now. Again, it's continuing to increase the rotor speed. We have more mechanical power to the rotor. Than the connected electrical road, so loads, the mechanical power is gonna continue to increase the speed as we go from point seven. Back to point six.
And Zach, what does? Um. The connected. Load, how come it continues to drop?
So the connected load. The amount of power that the motor is outputting. Um, if you, you remember the. Handbook calls it the power transfer formula. You can call it output power of a. Of a synchronous generator. It's the magnitude of EO times magnitude E. Divided by the reactants. Times sine delta. So we're purely looking at sine delta. A sine delta decreases from. From point six, look, it's approaching zero. It's going to decrease the output power. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
We're assuming no changes to the terminal voltage, assuming no changes to the excitation of the rotor, which creates the internal voltage in the stator. Of course, no change to the winding reactance of the machine. We're totally looking at the change in output power. The vertical value of this graph. Purely due to the change in sign of the horizontal axis, sign of the angle. That's a great question. All this graph is. All this graph is, this is just graph of sine delta. That's all it is. This is the first positive peak of a sine wave. That's all it is.
Okay.
So as delta decreases, going back to the origin. Your output power. Decreases. And you can think, again, think of your output power as a, as a load. So for example, let's say sine maybe thirty degrees. Would be this number times a half. If I do sine of a really small number like sine of zero, one. It's almost equal to zero. Does that make sense? That would be like sine of maybe thirty degrees and then as you approach sine of zero, sine of zero. Is zero. It's gonna decrease that graph.
Okay.
Any other questions on this step? We can talk about what happens when it gets back to steady state.
Um, no.
So.
Yeah, I'm trying to visualize it right now, which may be wrong. Um, but as the, as the rotor speed. Decreases. The power that's being outputted also decreases. Um.
So for the, for the output power. Don't even think about it in terms of rotor speed. Think of it only in terms of the torque angle delta. And it helps. Remember, look, on this graph. The horizontal axis. Is the angle of delta in this formula. And the vertical axis is really your output power.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And really. This graph has really two variables, output power on the vertical, torque angle on the horizontal. But we can talk about the changes in rotor speed along these points. But you gotta remember rotor speed is not shown anywhere on this graph, but we're just describing what happens to the rotor speed. Along those points to explain why does it stop at this point right here, once it speeds up? When it comes back down, why doesn't it stop at point six? Why does it continue to go back down to point seven? So we're just describing the changes in the rotor speed, but the graph only shows the relationships between output power and your torque angle.
Okay.
Let's see, we hit point seven. Rotor speed. Kept increasing to finally equal synchronous speed. It continues to increase in rotor speed, because even as we go from point seven. Back to point six, which we've just relabeled that. Point eight down here. Right, point seven, as we're going back to its steady state initial operating condition. Your rotor speed is continuing to increase. At point seven, it had finally just equaled its synchronous speed. But it's continuing to increase. Because as we go up, the vertical value of any of these points, it's still less than what?
The steam.
Yeah.
That's being supplied to.
Yeah, think about, you know, in real life, if there's a fault, is a utility gonna feed constant steam to a generator? Probably not, right? You can, you don't want to accidentally overspeed your generator. So this diagram is like looking at the most basic. Uh, behavior of what can happen. So it's kind of this value, mechanical input power. It's like we're feeding it an exact amount of steam at all times and we're never deviating from that. So from point seven to point eight. What happens when we get to point eight? Previously at point seven, rotor speed was equal to synchronous speed. From point seven back to point eight. The rotor speed was increasing. So at point eight, will the rotor speed equal synchronous speed? Or what will be the relationship between rotor speed and synchronous speed be?
The rotor speed will be greater.
Yeah, it'll be greater. So because it's greater, it doesn't stop at point eight. It's gonna overshoot it a little bit. But as I overshoot it, what's the value of my output power at this point compared to my constant input power?
The input power, the output power would be greater than the.
Output power is gonna be greater, so it's gonna want to do what to the speed? The load is bigger than the power we're giving it.
Well, it won't supply as much power and it'll, it'll lower the.
Yeah, it'll, it'll decrease the speed again. So it's gonna overshoot point eight. And then it's gonna, it's gonna, it's like a spring. It's like you condense the spring, you let it go. When you let it go, the spring doesn't just go like this, the spring goes like this until it finally stops. So it overshoots point eight, rotor speed slows down. Comes back down, uh-oh, now I'm under point eight. Now my mechanical power is more than my output power. So now it's gonna speed up, slow down, speed up, slow down, speed up, slow down, and it's gonna dampen and finally settle. Back here. It'll finally stop right at this point when the rotor speed equals synchronous speed. And then we call that it's back to steady state conditions. Rotor speed equals synchronous speed, the torque angle equals the initial operating angle. And our output power matches our input mechanical power, the steam.
Okay.
That makes sense. Any, 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 any questions, anything about this that that still might not be as clear as you'd like it to be?
No, it's, it's clear enough. Um. I guess what what helped me the most is is what you mentioned in the beginning is. From step one to two is. Is the generator gets disconnected from the grid and that that electrical load is what. Is what. Um, opposes the. The the rotor speed and kind of slows it down.
Awesome. Yeah, anytime. Anytime your output power, you know, this graph is labeled as P. It's really, we can call it PE to match the same formula. It's your output power. Anytime the vertical value of where we're at on this curve. If it's less than. The amount, think of the amount of, you know, the amount of steam or converting that steam. To electrical power, but you can think of the steam as how much horsepower is it, is it turning that turbine by? So yeah, if the output power is less than PM, like boom, we have a fault. There's no terminal voltage equals zero volts during the fault, zero times zero, it's all zero, right? So there's no output power. So now we're zero on the vertical axis. The mechanical power is greater, it's gonna speed up the rotor. And then the opposite is true. When the output power is greater than the mechanical power, when we jump back up on this curve. It's like we don't have enough mechanical power to keep it at that point. It's gonna, it's gonna fall back down. Feel good about this one?
I do, yes.
Excellent. Um, wanna keep marching on?
Yeah.
Awesome. So next question you asked about. Was a rotating machines homework problem. Uh, specifically solving for the amount of torque. From a synchronous motor. At a specific torque angle. And this, this problem, four point four, I believe we solve them with all the torque formulas in the handbook. And this one was solving it particularly with the torque formula. Uh, ratio of converted power to mechanical speed. Um, were you just looking for help with how to use this formula or was there a specific part of this uh, solution that that just didn't make sense?
I just wanted kind of go through it and. And yeah, just worked it with me.
Sure. Okay, so the first thing I'm gonna do. Anytime I'm working a rotating machines problem, I'm gonna sketch a quick single line diagram. I'm just trying to identify what matters and what doesn't. So here's our motor. Let's see, three phase. It's a medium voltage motor, forty one sixty volts. Uh, twelve hundred and fifty horsepower. And these are the nameplate ratings. It's. And these are the nameplate ratings. It's a lot of times a synchronous motor will be rated for one unity power factor. Is it operating at unity power factor? You gotta figure that out based on typically the torque angle. So let's see, we're looking for the torque. We're using this particular formula where the converted torque. Excuse me, converted power divided by the mechanical speed of the rotor equals the induced torque. So another diagram we can draw to help us. Is a single phase equivalent circuit for this generator. This is the same circuit that's in the reference handbook and the same circuit that we spend a lot of time on. During, uh, class four induction synchronous machines. They gave us the synchronous reactants, transient reactants and subtransient reactants. Remember, you're really only using transient and subtransient during fault circuit analysis. So this problem has nothing to do with fault, uh, fault current analysis, nothing to do with stability or transient stability. So the only value you really worry about is the synchronous reactants ten ohms. That's X of S typically is what the variable we use for that. Here's the internal voltage EO. Let's see, EO is twenty eight hundred volts. They even let us know they clarify, hey, it's a three phase motor, but that's per phase. Induced voltage, stator voltage, internal voltage, same thing, right? That's all EO. So I can say EO is. Twenty eight hundred. Say that's from here to here. Alright, next, um, my variable for my terminal voltage E, what number would that be in this circuit?
Twelve fifty divided by square root of three. Never mind, cuz that's horsepower. Um, forty one sixty. Divided by square root of three, right?
Beautiful, yeah. Forty one six, it's a three phase machine. So forty one sixty, that's like the value of E line. Applied, oh, I drew a generator, didn't I? Let's scoot this around. Three phase induction motor. Yeah, I drew a generator. I got ahead of myself. Alright, luckily I'm on, it's a lot easier to fix this when you're on a computer. Here's our. There we go. Alright, now we've got a motor. So yeah, our terminal voltage. Is the line terminal voltage rating divided by the square root of three. So that we can convert to a phase value in our single phase equivalent circuit. Alright, looking back at this, uh, torque formula. For. This formula is, you can use it for any kind of rotating machine, but it's really more commonly used for, uh, induction motors. So if I want to use this for a synchronous motor. Or synchronous generator. Your converted power. In this case, is gonna equal your power transfer formula, right? Reference handbook calls it power transfer, calls it P sub E. Really, you can think of it as. The power drawn by an induction motor or like on that last example, the power supplied. Sorry, power drawn by a synchronous motor rather, or the power supplied by a, a synchronous generator. And then again, in an induction motor. Does the rotor speed equal synchronous speed?
The, the, the rotor speed is less than the synchronous speed for an induction motor.
Perfect. What about for a synchronous machine? What's the relationship between the rotor speed or mechanical speed, same thing? Compared to the synchronous speed in the stator?
Should be equal.
Should be equal, yeah, that's, that's, that's exactly what makes it a synchronous machine. We excite the rotor with a DC voltage. So we create, we have two rotating magnetic fields instead of one. We have a rotating magnetic field in the rotor. And it locks into step with the stator magnetic poles. So. As the stator spins at root, at synchronous speed, so does the rotor. Perfect. So if I wanna use this formula. Let's calculate, instead of P converted, we can calculate the electrical output power of this motor. So PE is, this is straight from the handbook. We can either do three times. EO times E. Divided by synchronous reactants times sine delta. I need to do three times the phase values. Or instead of three, I can use the two line values. Both will calculate the total three phase power. So we've got almost everything to solve this problem except for one value, right? We've got E forty one sixty divided by square root of three, we've got EO, we've got X of S or synchronous reactants. And, uh, three, that's just a, just a coefficient. So what is the torque angle gonna be in the problem?
Fifteen degrees.
Yeah, fifteen degrees. This would be like. If this is zero degrees, this would be negative fifteen degrees. For a motor. Alright, this is E. And EO is somewhere down here. Alright, so EO, that was given to us in the problem. We've got. Twenty eight hundred volts. Times the line to neutral terminal voltage. Forty one sixty divided by square root of three. Divided by just the reactants, I don't include the J term, right? It's not. Synchronous impedance with a Z, it's just X of S, so we ignore the J operator in this case. And then we're gonna. Multiply by the sine of our fifteen degree torque angle. You can plug it in negative, it doesn't really matter. If you plug it in negative. You're gonna get a value down here in the negative region, which is the motoring region. It's a motor. It's kind of implied. Alright, so what do we get for the three phase power drawn by this synchronous motor? Which will equal the converted power in our torque formula. So my calculator have three times. Twenty eight hundred, there's EO. Times. Forty one sixty divided by the square root of three, there's our line to neutral terminal voltage. Divided by ten ohms, that's the synchronous reactants. And then multiply by sine of fifteen degrees. So we get about five hundred twenty two kilowatts, right? I'm just gonna divide by a thousand. So we have five hundred. Twenty two point two kilowatts. Are you with me so far?
Yes.
Great. So we got the top of this formula. Now all we need is the bottom. What are my units for, instead of synchronous speed using N and N sub S? What are my units when I have omega M or omega sync? A set of RPMs we have.
Radius, radians per second.
Beautiful, yeah. This is speed in radians per second. Another way to think about that is like power electronics. Omega equals two pi times the frequency and this is also radians per second. That's how I remember. Alright, so all we gotta do is calculate synchronous speed and RPMs. Uh, and then convert to radians per second. And we know, like you said earlier, hey, it's a synchronous machine. So the mechanical speed of the rotor is gonna equal the synchronous speed. It's the same thing. So we'll start off with our normal formula for synchronous speed and RPMs. It's a hundred and twenty times F frequency over P number of poles, uh, straight from the reference handbook. So a hundred and twenty times, frequency should be sixty, and if they don't tell you sixty hertz, you can always assume that. Yeah, it doesn't say sixty hertz, I'm gonna, I'm gonna assume, you can always assume sixty hertz unless you're dealing with like a. Funky power electronics problem with like a fast signal or harmonics. So a hundred and twenty times sixty hertz. Divided by how many poles are in this machine?
Four.
Four. Do you remember the discussion about pole pairs from class four?
Yes.
Right, always gotta watch out for that. They didn't say anything about pairs. Which means my value for P in that formula is exactly four. So we plug in four. And we get a synchronous speed of a hundred and twenty times sixty over four poles. So we have a synchronous speed of eighteen hundred RPMs. That's the same thing as revolutions per minute. Now all we gotta do is just convert. Do you remember how to convert from RPMs to radians per second?
Is there a, is this on one of the first pages of the?
I don't think they, I don't think they include it. There's a really easy way to remember though. First, I like to rewrite RPM. I'll rewrite it like this. Revolutions per minute. Right? And then I think of a big old circle. Here's one full circle, right? One revolution. In one circle, how many radians are there?
Two pi.
Two pi. You got it. That's all you need to remember. One revolution equals two pi radians. So if I wanna cancel out first revolutions. I got revolutions on top, I gotta put it on bottom. And then I wanna convert to radians, so radians goes on top. One revolution per every two pi radians. So we got two pi radians on top, one revolution on bottom. These two units cancel. Now all I gotta do is convert from per minute. To per seconds.
Okay.
So again, minutes are on bottom. To get minutes to cancel this time, I gotta put them on top. And again, I wanna convert to per second, so I put seconds on bottom. In one minute, how many seconds are there?
Five hundred.
Five hundred, second per minute.
I wish, I wish, sixty.
Yeah, sixty. Look, now our minutes cancel and we just converted to radians per second. All you gotta do is multiply by two pi over sixty seconds to get WM in radians per second. So that last value, my calculator, eighteen hundred RPMs, I'm just multiplying by two pi over sixty. And, uh, that cancels out to just, uh, sixty pi. Alright, we've got. The top portion of this formula and we've got the bottom portion. Induced torque. Equals P converted over omega M. P converted for a synchronous motor is equal to the power drawn according to the power transfer formula. So I got five hundred twenty two point two kilowatts on top. We've got synchronous speed in radians per second on the bottom, sixty pi. So now we're just gonna take the ratio. Of this number. So let's see, my calculator, I'm gonna go back up. Here's five hundred twenty two. I can multiply that by E to the three for kilowatts. And I'm gonna divide by sixty pi. So we get a whopping. Two thousand seven hundred and seventy. Each of the torque formulas in the reference handbook, what units do they solve in? Do you remember?
I don't.
So instead of, so we got two different units here for this problem. It's asking for the Newton meter, kilonewton meter or foot pounds. Foot pounds is imperial units like feet and inches. It meters is metric, right? All of your torque formulas solve for the metric units. So this is two thousand seven hundred and seventy Newton meters. Or problem asks for the kilo Newton meters. Which is just two point seven seven. K and. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And then converting to foot pounds, um, that's just using any of the reference handbook formula conversion factors on page two. We can do that if you like, um, but we got, we got ten minutes. We can see if we can knock out the next two problems.
Sure, we can. At least try to get through the next one.
Sure, move forward.
Yes.
Alright. So this was a select all that apply question for rotating machines for phaser diagrams. Um, after we do this today, I would suggest just revisiting class four when we looked at. We looked at. Almost all of these, except for these ones on the same page. But all the other ones, all the other six ones, we looked at them, so it'd be a good refresher. But let's see if we can narrow this down. The problem asks for, select all of the phaser diagrams that could potentially represent a. Synchronous machine with the following conditions. First condition, the rotor poles leads the stator poles. What kind of synchronous machine do you think that is? Is that a generator or a motor?
Um, the rotor poles. Lead. The stator poles.
Yeah, they're both rotating at synchronous speed, but if the rotor. Is leading in front of the stator, that's always gonna be a generator.
Okay.
If the rotor lags behind, remember you got, you got a rotor, you got a stator. They're both spinning at synchronous speed. But if the rotor is in front of the stator poles while they're both at synchronous speed, it's a generator. If the rotor poles are behind the stator poles while it's rotating at synchronous speed, it's a motor.
Okay.
So first one says generator. Are there any phaser diagrams down here belonging to a motor that we can get rid of? How about, how about this? Let's peek back to, I sketched out a phaser diagram. On this page for this synchronous motor. Do you notice, uh, right here, look at this phaser diagram? Do you notice what's unique about this phaser diagram? Terminal voltage is always at zero degree reference, right? Is the internal voltage EO, does it lead or lag my terminal voltage from motor?
Lags.
Yeah, lags. So let's go back to the previous page. Let's see if we see any lagging internal voltage. Compared to the terminal voltage.
Yes, I was B and C.
Yeah, B is a motor. C is a motor. So it's not B or C. What about F?
I guess, yeah.
Yeah, look, that's like, that's like E reference of zero. And EO angle of negative ninety degrees. Does EO lag E?
Yes, by a lot.
Yeah, by a lot. So this is a motor. Is there one more?
Then H.
H, perfect. H is a motor. So boom, those cannot be the answer. Alright, let's go back. The rotor is excited with a DC voltage. That just tells us what? Is that an induction machine or synchronous machine?
Um, the rotor is excited with, that's a synchronous machine.
Yeah, it's a synchronous machine. This doesn't tell us anything new, right? We already know from the problem. Which synchronous machine matching these conditions? So that doesn't really help us. We already knew it was a synchronous machine. Next one, rotor operates at synchronous speed. Is that an induction machine or a synchronous machine?
That is a synchronous machine.
Yeah, so again. Doesn't tell us anything new. Aha, interesting. The mach, the machine has a lagging power factor. We already know it's a generator. A generator with a lagging power factor feeds loads with a lagging power factor. Meaning if my lagging load consumes reactive power, my lagging generator has to do what?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. It's saying the machine has a lagging power factor. We know it's a generator, right?
Yes.
So does a lagging generator supply reactive power or consume reactive power?
So my train of thought, lagging, a lagging generator, um, the current would lag the voltage. So it would the current.
Can I give you a good analogy?
Sure.
So lagging generators, it's a common point of confusion when people learn this for the first time. If I think of a lagging load like an induction motor, does an induction motor draw reactive power or does an induction motor supply reactive power? Induction motors always lag. Induction motors always consume reactive power. Right? That's why we can use capacitors to power factor or power factor correction. But when I think of a motor, induction motors are the most common type of motor, always consumes reactive power, it's lagging. So the mistake is most people will associate a lagging motor. Hey, that consumes reactive power, so a lagging generator must also consume reactive power. Um, but that's not true. Think of it, the analogy I like to use is think of a game of tug of war. So I think of my pen here. We'll put it in this direction. Induction motors consume reactive power. So if I, if my motor is over here, the flow of reactive power is going into my motor. If I have an induction, excuse me, if I have a lagging load, I need a lagging generator. So the flow, the flow of reactive power is still flowing into the motor. So it's gotta be supplied by who?
By the generator?
By the generator. So a lagging generator supplies the reactive power consumed by a lagging load. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
So a lagging generator is gonna export or supply reactive power? If it's supplying reactive power, do you remember if it's over or under excited?
Over excited.
Perfect. Over excited. Motors and generators, synchronous machines, if they're over excited, they always export reactive power. Over excitation and under excitation always mean the same thing. Over excited, too much reactive power, we give some away. Under excited, not enough reactive power, we draw some back in. But when we talk about lagging versus leading, that's when it depends if it's a generator or a motor in terms of is it exporting reactive power or consuming? But over excited always means the same thing. We're exporting reactive power. Do you remember the relationships on a phaser diagram which tell us that the machine is over excited?
If it's over excited, I would say that E not um, leads E?
Not quite. So EO leading E, that just tells us it's a generator. Here's our relationship true for motors and generators. If it's over excited, the real component of the internal voltage, it's bigger than the terminal voltage. So let's look at let's look at E in the middle. We know it's not a motor, so it has to be a generator. How do we figure out the real component of EO? I'm just gonna draw a straight line down to the origin. And now I'm gonna draw a new arrow right here. So this arrow here is the real component of EO. Is it bigger or is it smaller than the magnitude of the terminal voltage?
Smaller.
Smaller, yeah. Looking at this arrow compared to this arrow. So it's not over excited, it's
under excited.
Under excited. So E's not the answer. If I look at G, it's not a motor. Must be a generator, EO leads E. If I draw the real component of EO, is the, it's a trick question, is the real component of EO bigger or smaller than terminal voltage E?
It's equal.
Equal, great. So this isn't over excited, it's not under excited. This is unity power factor. So it's not G. Let's look at D. It's not a motor, right? It's gotta be a generator, EO leads E, true for generators. Let's look at the real component of EO. If EO was a triangle, the real component would be the base of that triangle. What's the relationship between EO, the real component, and E this time?
Or we're looking at H?
Uh, looking at D. Is this arrow head that is bigger or smaller than this one?
It's bigger.
It's bigger. So here's our first example of an over excited generator. So we know D is one of the potential answers. We only have one left is A. We know A is a we know it's a generator because EO leads E. What's the real component of EO equal to?
Zero.
Zero. Is that bigger or smaller than magnitude E?
Smaller.
Yeah, it's smaller. So this is under excited, which is not the answer. The other thing to point out that A is not the answer, there's a special condition that occurs when EO is either at ninety degrees for a generator or when EO is at negative ninety degrees for a motor. Are you familiar with that condition?
Not off the top of my head.
That's, this is the condition for maximum power. And it comes straight from this formula again, E equals magnitude EO times magnitude D divided by the synchronous reactants times sine of delta. If there's no change to the internal voltage magnitude, magnitude DO, there's no change to the terminal voltage magnitude, magnitude D. If there's no change to the reactants, all we're looking at is the change in sine of delta. What's the biggest value that the angle delta can be to maximize sine delta? What's a sine of ninety degrees? What do we get?
One.
Yeah, sine of ninety is one. What happens if I have an angle less than ninety? What if I have sine of eighty-nine? Is it gonna be more than one or less than one?
Less.
Yeah. The biggest value that sine delta can be is when delta equals ninety. This whole thing equals one. Any value other than ninety degrees for the torque angle is a value less than one, which will decrease the rest of this term. So this is known as, it's a really good theoretical qualitative problem. They could ask you maximum power, sometimes we'll call it maximum power transfer occurs for a generator when EO is ninety degrees, it'll produce as much power as physically possible. Or a motor will consume as much power as physically power, uh, possible when it's negative ninety. It'll it'll supply as much horsepower. You could think of it that way in a rotational sense. So the last clue, so we know this is under excited because the real component is equal to zero, which is obviously less than E. So it's under excited, it's importing vars, it's actually leading, not lagging. But the other clue is here, a machine is seventy-five percent loaded. This would be maximum power is is way more than seventy-five percent power. So that's the other clue that it's also not A. So the only answer can be D.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
And just a quick question. Um, so where, so E is the terminal voltage, right?
Yes.
Where would you, where would you measure E and EO? Or E not in, on the, on a generator, for example?
Where would we measure it, like on the, on the circuit?
If you had to probe it.
Oh, sure. So you can't really, so if we draw this real quick, let's draw a generator. The generator. A generator, you can really only measure the terminal voltage, E, which is why we use the open and short circuit test. Alright, here's our terminal voltage. Here's where, if I'm at a tailgate party, that's where I'm hooking up my speakers, all my equipment too, right? Um, if it's a utility generator, that's the bus bar that gets bolted to the outgoing generator breaker, right? Really heavy duty bus bar and a really big bus duct. This value represents the windings in the generator, the coils in the stator. EO, this represents, you have a got the rotor over here. Here's a quick freehand sketch of the rotor. So don't judge me. I can move this over here. Alright. Here's the rotor of the generator. Here's the stator. So you can probe terminal voltage all day long. That's exactly where the generator couples to the grid. If I have a really big, like a diesel backup generator, there's always gonna be, if it's a three full, three pole generator, you're gonna have a three pole molded case circuit breaker mounted to that generator. You land, maybe you're back feeding an MCC, you take leads to go to the motor control center and you land them on that breaker. The load side of that breaker, you can think of that as your terminal voltage. It'd almost, it'd be like having a breaker right here. Yeah.
Okay.
Your rotor, so the other voltage, you can't really probe it. Remember, this is, at the end of the day, this is just a circuit model. The rotor draws current, creates magnetic field, induces a flux in the rotor windings. That flux induces a voltage into the stator windings. It's like thinking about, it's like having a transformer where the primary winding is physically rotating. It's the same, same principles, except a transformer, I can probe the primary side, I can probe the secondary side all day. On a synchronous generator, there really is no place to put a probe between here and here. It doesn't work that way. This is a, this is a circuit model that relates to variables. Um, there is a trick to measuring this, and that's the the open circuit test. If I have an open circuit, but I start my generator up, start up the rotor, feed, you know, feed the generator steam, I excite the rotor. So the rotor excitation current flows, which creates a flux in the rotor, which induces a voltage internally in the stator. If there's no load connected across the terminals, what's my load current going to equal?
Zero.
Yeah, no load, no current. If I have no current, what's the voltage drop E of X gonna be across my synchronous reactants?
Zero.
Yeah, no current. I certainly don't have any voltage drop, even from Ohm's law, V equals I times Z. Zero for I times Z, zero times anything, still zero. So during the open circuit test, now I can stick a volt meter across the terminal. What voltage am I gonna read if I have no voltage drop across E of, uh, cross X of S? If you have X equals zero during the open circuit test?
Yeah, E not.
Yeah, I'm gonna measure the internal voltage. So that's the trick to measure the internal voltage.
Okay, yeah, this visual helps a lot because it also shows the relationship between here, we can see that E, and we also see that the rotor leads the stator.
So you can't, unfortunately, you can't really see that the rotor leads the stator here, but let me see if I can sketch another quick one. And then we'll be right at, or a little bit past thirty minutes, but I think this will help you. Um, here's the stator. This is like, this is a cross section view, right? Cut the machine in half and we're looking into it. Um, let's say we got a north pole and a south pole. Let's say we got a two pole machine, make it really easy. Two pole machine. Here's pole number one, here's pole number two. So that's my stator. And let's make it, uh, black. Now, let's draw the rotor. So you got a little, little itty bitty air gap between the rotor and stator, right? This is just air. Really tiny air can probably barely fit a sheet of paper in there. Here's the rotor. So stator in black, rotor in blue, right? Again, it's like, cut the machine in half and we're looking directly into the stator windings. These are both spinning at synchronous speed. Like this, whole time, they're both spinning at synchronous speed, right? Now, when we talk about rotor leading or lagging the stator poles, instead of moving both of them, I'm just gonna move the rotor here. Right now, let's say this is, this is like ninety degrees, right? Plus ninety, or you can even say, you know, zero degrees. But right now, they're both, I move this over. Uh, wrong button, hang on. Right now, they're, they're both they're both at like that same ninety degree, right? If I, I can really even match them up. So see how they're both, they're, the rotor isn't leading or lagging, it's perfectly, it's both at ninety degrees, they're both in phase, right? And, uh, we're talking about the ac- the actual physical rotation. We're not talking about a phaser diagram and the difference in angles between phasers. I'm talking about, so the stator, this is the rotating magnetic field in the stator, sixty times a second, assuming. And this is the physical rotation of the rotor spinning. So here's my stator, here's my rotor. It's like if I turn it this way, cut it in half. And now we're looking at the rotor and the stator. So this would be like an un- an unload, an unloaded generator. And again, they're both, we're assuming they're both moving at synchronous speed. So now what happens? See if I can grab just the rotor. Perfect. So now look. I'm gonna rotate just the rotor. Perfect. Do you see how there is, there's a difference in angle between these two poles?
Right.
And really, this needs to be south pole. This needs to be north pole. Opposites attract. So these two poles are magnetically attracted to each other, north and south, magnetically attracted to each other. North and south, those are created by exciting the rotor windings with a DC Those are created by exciting the rotor windings with a DC voltage. The stator north and south, that comes from the terminal voltage. Backfeeding the stator windings, the synchronous speed comes from the terminal voltage. So now, do you see how, if they're both moving clockwise? I'm just gonna delete that label for a second. If these are both moving clockwise. We're assuming they're moving at synchronous speed. You still see how the rotor is in front, the rotor pole south is in front of the stator pole north?
Yeah.
So that's always gonna be true for a generator.
Right.
For a motor. The opposite is true. For a motor. Again, see if I can just grab the rotor. For the, for a, for a motor. The rotor, so right now they're in phase, that's like an unloaded synchronous generator or an unloaded motor. For a motor. Again, when we apply a load. It's gonna wanna slow it down. But it's still gonna be moving in synchronous. Synchronous speed.
Right.
So it's not a, it's not a perfect. Let's draw this. Here's the rotor. And here's the stator pole. So again, this pole attracts this pole, they're magnetically coupled. Both the stator, the stator field is moving magnetically, right? Stator doesn't physically move, we can't see it with the eye, it's the rotating magnetic field. While the rotor physically rotates. Assuming they're both rotating. Counter clockwise. Now, the rotor pole lags the stator pole. And that's always gonna be true for a motor. So again, if they're both rotating clockwise at synchronous speed. They're both moving at synchronous speed, but there is an, there's a little bit of a mechanical angle displacement where the rotor pole is slightly behind the stator pole. As they rotate at synchronous speed. Does that make sense?
Okay.
And ro, rotor. Rotor will lag behind for a motor, lead in front for a generator. And I just gotta be careful, cuz when, when we say lead or lag, typically we're thinking of. Phaser diagrams, but this is an actual, like, that's like a mechanical diagram. Of the rotor spinning inside the stator.
Wow.
Makes sense?
It does.
Alright, we are unfortunately out of time today. Uh, we went a little bit over, which is perfectly okay. Um, I didn't have anything else after that, so I was happy to do so. Um, any, any last minute questions be before we cut to the chase?
No, I, I appreciate you taking the time to. To clarify these things for me. Um, it helps a lot. I know it's, some of it's. Kind of elementary, but I like to, I like to visualize, um, what I learned so that. It, it really ingrains in. In my mind and I, and I truly understand what's going on here.
No, that's, that's a great attitude. Um, you, you know me from class, I always like to take everything back down to the fundamentals. So even like using your word elementary. The more elementary you can kinda condense things down into, the more you're gonna see similar patterns. That occur across all subjects, power fundamentals, circuit analysis, and, uh, yeah. Anytime you're looking at a complicated problem. Most of the time, if you can kinda distill it down to the more elementary topics, it's a lot easier to pick out each of the individual steps. So that's a, that's a great attitude. That's a great thought process. Um, I'm sorry, we didn't, we didn't have time to cover. Uh, you had two NEC homework questions, both from, one from class three, one from class eight. And then the zero sequence network for, uh, last week's class eight. I would still say, please post these on the student message board, and we can continue the discussion at least offline. But that way, you know, we can still work through it together on the message board, we'll get everyone else's input too, and I think it'll help clear things up for you as well.
Sounds good.
Alright, Michael, hey, nice to meet you face to face. Keep up the hard work. Is this your first time taking the P exam?
No, I actually took it, the first time I took it, I didn't, I, I tried to. I was optimistic and kind of. Um. I, I was trying to, to pass it, to see if I can pass it the first time, but. Didn't work out, so I'll be taking it again in, in a few months.
That's right, yeah. At the start, you mentioned you had tried to self-study. What, what date? What date are you taking the P exam?
April twenty-second.
April twenty-second. That's a, that's a great time, that's. You got a few weeks after the winter semester is done, so that the class schedule will be over, but you can use that time to. Work your index. Are you keeping an index?
Yeah.
Great. You're doing eight hour study sessions once a week?
Yes.
Great.
We're not, I'm, I'm trying to do it once a week. Um. I'm, now I'm, I'm taking practice exams on, on the weekends and doing that whole eight hour timeframes.
That counts.
Yeah.
That counts. You're doing practice exams, um, keeping up with class, you're posting on the student message board?
Not as much as I should be.
Not as much. Here's, here's the secret. Use your phone. You can, you can download the app, or you can log in from your browser. And as you're studying, you can just snap a photo, type a question, post it. Move on to the next problem and, uh, you know, it won't, it won't slow you down. Yeah, just use your phone, it's the easiest way, it's really convenient.
Yeah, it's a good idea. Instead of trying to break my head over things on my own, kind of use the, the community.
That's the whole point, yeah.
Right.
You, I mean, you can spend hours, you know, pulling your hair out, or, you know, when you get stuck, I, I've been there, I totally get it. When you get stuck, post a problem and move on, and then, uh, jump back to the community the next day and, and. It'll, we'll be able to kinda pull it all apart for you, so. Alright, Michael, hey, great meeting you, um, and keep all the har, keep up all the hard work, uh. You said April twenty-second?
Yep.
Alright, now you got about a little bit, a little bit less than two months, so yeah, keep up all the hard work and you'll be, you'll be in good shape.
Alright Zach, hopefully we get good news. I think we will.
I think we will.
Yeah.
Thank you, I'll be, I'll be waiting for your email, sounds good.
Will do. Alright Zach, take care.
Take care, Michael, we'll see ya.